Called order, the regular meeting of the City of Dickinson, City Commission Meeting of Tuesday, April fifteenth, 2025. Let it be known that Mayor Decker is absent and the other Commissioners are all here. So let that be recorded. We will begin with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Hope you're having a good tax day and thank you for coming. Mr. Dastner, is there any, anything, any changes to the order of business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is no change to the order of business this evening.
Okay, thank you. If there is no changes, Commissioners, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It does pass. Moving on with the consent agenda. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Will we get the vote? Commissioner Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Commissioner Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, moves without consent. Consent approved. Move on to Administration and Finances. And I have a Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation here to read. Child prevention, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are vital to our city's future success, prosperity and quality of life, as well as being our most valuable asset. Whereas all children deserve to have safe, stable, nurturing homes and a community they need to foster their health, growth and development. Whereas children, whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of life and a community. Whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children ensures all children grow to their fullest potential. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnership created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, I hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders of businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing children, child abuse, and strengthening the community in which we live. I wit, in witness thereof, I hear, I have here unto set my hand and cause this seal to be fixed.
Mr. Vice President, move to approve of the proclamation.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approved. We'll now move on to the Southwest Water Authority Board appointment. Mr. Dastner.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Commission. On April tenth, a committee consisted of Senior Engineer Christopher Keller, Commissioner Joe Riddle, and myself met to interview four can, interested candidates for the Southwest Water Authority Board position. The appointment will fill the vacancy left by George Nodlin. The term will expire in 2026. The committee selected Ryan Baumgartner. I am recommending Mr. Baumgartner's appointment to the Southwest Water Authority Board this evening, and he is in attendance. And if you'd like to step forward and introduce himself and say a few words.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. As Mr. Dastner said, my name's Ryan Baumgartner. I grew up in rural, south central North Dakota. Been a resident of Dickinson for the last eight years. It's really grown on myself and my family over these years. It's became home. If you folks approve, looking forward to the opportunity to represent Dickinson and its residents on the Southwest Water Authority Board. Be happy to take any questions that you all may have for me.
Commissioners, any questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Move, the motion made by Commissioner Riddle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Although, Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approval given.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. We'll now move on to gaming site authorization, Dickinson Youth Activities. This will be done by City Administrator, City Administrator, Mr. Dastner.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Commission. This evening, we have seven site authorizations for gaming for Dickinson Youth Activities. All seven will have the effective date of July first of 2025 to June thirtieth of 2026. The first one's going to be Spur Bar located at thirteen oh six West Valard. This will be for electronic pull tab devices, sports pools, pull tab jars, pull tab dispensing devices, twenty-one raffles, and Calcutta's. The second one will be at Neighbor's Bar located at seven forty-five State Avenue. This will be for electronic pull tab devices, pull tab jars, pull tab dispensing device, and twenty-one. The third one will be at the Grand Dakota Lodge located at five thirty-two fifteen Street West. This will be for electronic pull tab devices, pull tab jars, twenty-one, Calcutta's, and paddle wheel table. Fourth one will be at the Elks Lodge, seven thirty, eleven thirty-seven, located at five oh one Elks Drive. This will be for electronic pull tab devices, raffles, pull tab dispensing devices, and twenty-one. The fifth one will be at Maverick Saloon located at one ninety-six Museum Drive. This will be for electronic pull tab devices, pull tab dispensing jars, pull tab jars, and twenty-one. The sixth one will be The Rock located at one thirteen First Street West. This will be for Bingo, raffles, pull tab jar, electronic pull tab devices, sports pools, twenty-one, Calcutta's, and paddle wheel tables. And the last one for Dickinson Youth Activities will be Buffalo Wild Wings located at thirty-five forty-five West Ridge Drive. And this will be for electronic pull tab devices. City staff have reviewed the application and recommends approval for the, these gaming sites for Dickinson Youth Activities.
Thank you, Mr. Dastner. Commissioners, any questions?
Move to approve.
Move, move to approve by Commissioner Oderman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle? Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is approved. We'll move on. Going on to game, the second one with the Eagles. Mr. Dastner?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the Commission. We do have one more gaming site authorization this evening. This is for the Dickinson Eagles, Aerie twenty-three twenty-eight. Again, this also has the effective date of July, of July first of 2025 to June thirtieth of 2026. Dickinson Eagles, which is located at thirty-one First Avenue East. This will be for Bingo's, raffles, pull tab jars, pull tab dispensing devices, electronic pull tab devices, prize board, dispensing device, sports pools, twenty-one, and Calcutta's. City staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dastner. Commissioners, any questions or discussion? If not, could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move, move to approve by Commissioner Frederick. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Now vote, Commissioner, Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion, motion approved. Moving on to Southwest Water. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Wrong way. Moving on to Monthly Financial Report. Mrs. Carlson.
Thank you, Vice President and Commissioners. So this will be our, for period ending March thirty-first for our financial report. Our general fund statement activity, our balance, fund balance as of end of March is four million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three ninety-eight. So for our one percent sales tax, and this is for March, one percent sales tax came in sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-one, higher than twenty-four, but lower than twenty-three. And then for the half percent sales tax, again, we came in thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars higher than twenty-twenty-four, but then lower than twenty-three. Then with the one and a half percent combined over the last three months, over the seven-year period, for a three-month total, the sales tax came in two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars over twenty-twenty-four, or about eight point five-two percent higher, and is still the highest of seven years by about four point three-nine percent. Our hospitality tax came in four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars less than twenty-four for the same time in March. And our hospitality tax over a seven-year period shows seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars more than twenty-twenty-four, and, but is still the highest for the last seven years. Occupancy tax received in March was just short of twenty-twenty-four by three hundred and eighty-three dollars. So it's right on that line. And our occupancy over the seven years, three months total is the highest in twenty-twenty-five by three thousand, seven hundred and forty, or five point one-seven percent. Our oil impact, twenty-twenty-five, the last three months is still falling behind of twenty-twenty-four. In March, the tax revenue came in nine thousand, five hundred and four dollars short of twenty-twenty-four. And over the seven-year, three-month totals comparison, twenty-twenty-five is down by two hundred and fifty-five thousand, or six point two-five percent. Our general fund collected is twelve percent. And for three months, we'd be at the twenty-five percent as a benchmark. But then our general fund expenditures, we have twenty-three percent expended in general funds. And for our enterprise utilities, utilities collected fourteen percent and expended eleven percent as through March thirty-first. And I stand for any questions if you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Carlson.
Ms. Carlson, do we have any concerns with the oil impact and how it's trending and what the budget number is?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I do not. Um, it's been pretty level for the last three months, as you saw. It's been staying pretty level. And if we do that, then we'll, we should be coming in pretty good for what our, what our was budgeted for the year for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. We'll now move into HR Monthly Report, given by Natalie Torgerson.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Natalie Torgerson here for Director Nomenak. Go through the Hiring Journal with you tonight. Okay, so starting off with the Police Department, we do still have some entry and lateral positions open. We have three openings. We hired one, and we are in the interview stage. And I believe the one that we're hiring starts Monday. For the Public Safety Telecommunicator, we have one opening, and we're in the interview stage, and we did onboard one last Monday. Animal Control Officer, we are in the background stage. We're getting ready to wrap that up. And then the Corporal is internal only, and we had one opening there, and we are in the interview stage for that. Moving on to Fire Department, we've got paramedics, four of those open. Background stage and interview stage. I think that we have two in the background stage right now. And then part-time fire, we are still looking for five. We hired Chandler and Kelly, and we have some in background. Public Works, Street Maintenance, four openings. We just onboarded Dennis St. Clair on Monday. We have one other one that's in the background stage. Solid Waste, we have two openings. Interviews are next week for those. Buildings and Grounds Operator, one opening. Seasonal Buildings and Grounds, twelve openings, four rehired, and the rest are in background. I think we're just about full with that for seasonal. Seasonal Forestry, we have filled. Seasonal Utility Operator, I believe we have filled. And Seasonal Solid Waste, we are in the interview stage with those. Construction Project Manager, we did finally make a hire, so he is here tonight. Hopefully, you'll get to meet him later, Mr. Greg. We have an Engineering Tech. Nope, we don't have anything open there. We hired both of our engineering technicians, so that is now full. And then we made an offer for our Administrative Assistant, and we are waiting to hear back from her. At the Museum, we have one Seasonal Paleo Assistant open, and then two openings for Seasonal Museum Workers. We did fill the Seasonal Paleo, so that person's in the background stage. And I think for the Seasonal Museum Worker, we actually have one that's coming back and one that we'll interview for. If anyone knows anyone, send them that way. Deputy Finance Director, we had an opening for that. The position came down. We reviewed applicants, and we are discussing what the next steps are with that. And for the Finance Technician, we did interviews last week, and we have made a conditional offer on that. So we'll be getting close to filling that. Legacy Square, the Marketing and Events Director, they did interviews, and I do believe we're in the background for that. Seasonal Programming Assistant, they did some interviews and decided to reopen it. So if anyone has any ideas or someone that might be good, send them our way. Same with the Legacy Square Maintenance Worker, which was new for this year. We have that open still as well. Librarian, we got a lot of good applicants, eight of them. So we'll be doing interviews Wednesday and Thursday this week, and we should have that filled. And I would take any questions if there are any.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torgerson.
We'll now move into Public Works. And we have South Heart Reused Water Contract presented by Deputy Public Works Director Waldo.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice President and Commissioners. I'm Jake Waldo, I'm your Deputy Public Works Director. For your consideration tonight, I have a pair of reused water contracts for City of South Heart. These contracts will allow the continued sale of reused water to the City of South Heart. The irrigation contract provides for a three-year term and sales at a rate of a dollar sixty per thousand gallons to be used for irrigation at the Pheasant Country Golf Course. The reuse contract provides for a one-year term and sales at a rate of six dollars and seventy-five cents per thousand gallons to be drawn from their irrigation water supply and sold to a third party as fracking water. That resale contract was initially approved as an amendment to the South Heart Reused Water Contract last year. By creating a separate contract specifically for this purpose, we're able to ensure that the supply of irrigation water to South Heart remains uninterrupted if there are any disruptions to their resale ability. These contracts have been reviewed by City Attorney Wanko, and staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any, any questions?
Separate motions for both?
That would be fine if the Commission intends to do that. Or if the intent is to approve them both, you could do them together.
Okay, I'd move to approve both contracts.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Oderman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Go ahead and vote. Commissioner, Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion, motion approved. Move on to, um, I don't know. Oh, we have the next one with the Track Loader Bid Approval, also with Deputy Public Works Director Waldo.
Yes, thank you. For your consideration tonight, a bid opening for a new track loader for use in our Utilities Division was held on March thirty-first at one PM. The low bid was provided by Titan Machinery for a twenty-twenty-five Case TV four fifty B at a cost of ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. This equipment purchase was approved in the twenty-twenty-five budget as a cash, as a cash purchase with an amount tied to it of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Based on the bid documents attached, Public Works staff recommends approval and purchase of the Case Track Loader.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Waldo, any reason why it's forty-five thousand below what we had, had budgeted?
That, I guess I'm not entirely sure. I know the weight specifications that we had for rollover weight and that sort of thing dictated a certain size. But as to why there's that big of a gap, I'm not entirely sure.
Okay.
Any other dis, questions? If not, may I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Vice President, move to approve.
Okay, got, got a motion by Commissioner Frederick?
Second.
Second? Second by Commissioner Oderman. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. And three times is the charm. Move on to Built, Building Service Job Description, also presented by Deputy Public Works Director Waldo.
Thank you. Last item I have for you this evening. This job description will create a new promotional position across several city facilities and departments. This position was initially presented and approved in the twenty-twenty-five budget as an achievable advancement for the Building Service Worker Position. To better new, to better suit the needs of our facilities, the position has been changed to include duties mirroring those of our Buildings and Grounds Operators while still including the custodial duties of the Building Service Worker Position. These new expanded duties include changing HVAC filters and light bulbs, lawn maintenance, weed and vector control at their facilities, supervising licensed contractors on city property as needed, and working to support programming and events at their assigned facility. Department leadership will have the option to budget for this position in place of their Building Service Worker Position. The internal candidate will then have the opportunity to interview for this position. This job description's been reviewed by HR, and staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, may I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Commissioner, or Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Commissioner, Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Thank you, Commissioners, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-five Cemetery Report presented by Public Works Director Prowse. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice President, Bear, and Commissioners. Just to recap Mr. Oderman's question a little bit, the twenty-five thousand is actually going to be used for a couple additional equipment attachment purchases for that unit. We do buy these from a, a third party, so we have like units in our fleet.
Thank you.
Twenty-twenty-five Cemetery Report, with our busy season coming upon us, the spring season, people are going to start wanting to move around. So I wanted to present this report tonight just to recap our rules and regulations of what are now Chapter Ten of our City Municipal Code. Guidelines for Care and Appearance Within the Cemetery Grave Sites. No lot or grave may be defined by a fence rail, coping, hedge, embankment, or depression. No planting of flowers, trees, vine shrubs. Trees and shrubs may not be cut down, removed, or trimmed unless by authorized city personnel or a third party which is authorized by the city. No jars, glass bottles, vases, tin cans, et cetera, may be placed on grave sites. And the placing of wreaths, sprays, flower boxes, and cut flowers shall be restricted to those graves that have a regular container that is a four-inch base secured to the foundation, also known as a vase, which is attached to the headstone or footstone. Similar guidelines do follow with the mausoleum. Placement of floral arrangements on the mausoleum ground is prohibited. They may be attached to a crypt or niche cover by a vase that is supplied or purchased from the city. And to maintain cleanliness of, of the mausoleum, we do want those vases placed on the lower-left corner of the cover. Floral arrangements must be placed within the dimensions of the cover so they do not extend over other people's covers as they have purchased those spaces as well. We do have a limit of one porcelain picture not to exceed to a three-by-five-inch size, and then one military emblem per single crypt or niche cover. And privately-owned benches are prohibited on the mausoleum grounds. Memorial Day coming up next month. We have flowers, flags, and displays may be placed on grave sites one week before Memorial Day and must be removed one week after. After Memorial Day window has closed, staff will remove any remaining flowers and displays that are not fixed to the monuments. This is for maintenance purposes so that we can keep the sites clean and looking presentable for all the general public that stop by and visit their loved ones. The city will be unable to return any of these items and that are removed from the grave sites after this timeframe. Our Cemetery Care Plan is going to be as follows. We're going to start Far North Cemetery, which would be Saint Patrick, Saint Wenceslas Cemetery, proceeding south across the interstate to the Dickinson Cemetery, over to the southwest corner of town where the Saint Joseph Cemetery is at, followed by the Dickinson's South Cemetery, which is the newest cemetery. We are dedicating staff to this process, or to the maintenance and care for the cemeteries this year. We're looking at three to four seasonal staff along with a full-time member. The staff will begin, before the staff begins work, they'll do a recap, or a briefing of the understanding and adhere to our procedures. Any flowers and displays that are located on the ground not affixed to a monument will be removed, and then we can start trimming around those areas along with the areas that are too tight for the mowers to access. From that point, they will continue on with the mowing. And then before proceeding to the next cemetery site, the crews will walk around with backpack blowers and try to clean those monuments off as best they possibly can to get all the grass clippings and whatnot off of the monuments and make them look presentable. If any areas are missed, we will go back and we'll do a touch-up. Couple new changes that we did this year in our cemeteries. As you can see on the image to the right, we did purchase cemeteries that give you the cemetery name along with the address in case something would occur. And then a briefing of the rules and etiquette that we'd ask in the cemeteries. On the very bottom, if there's any concerns, you can please reach out to Public Works, four-five-six-seven-nine-seven-nine. Also reference our municipal code on our Dickinson website, as I said earlier, which is Chapter Ten. We are working with IT to make sure we have publicness, public notices sent out on our website along with Channel nineteen. And then we are going to use Civic Plus and Dickinson Works to give people reminders one week before and one week after Memorial Day. If you do not have Civic Plus, or if you do not have Dickinson Works, I recommend you get signed up for those two, and that would be a good communication source to utilize. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any, any questions for Mr. Prowse?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Prowse.
Okay, we're coming up to the five o'clock hour here. We're going to move on to, um, we're going to go to Public Theory, beginning with the Dickinson Clay Club Presentation presented by President and Head Coach, Ducart.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Blaine Ducart with the Dickinson Clay Target Club. I'm the president and head coach out there. I've been running a student program for the last six years. So I'm here tonight just to do a brief presentation and make it, give more public awareness to where we're at, which is on Hundred and Fifteenth Avenue, Southwest. is on Hundred and Fifteenth Avenue Southwest next to the Crooked Crane Trail. And I'm going to turn the podium over to a couple of our moms and their students who happen to be two of our best shooters in the state of North Dakota.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carrie Roller, and I'm here to give a brief presentation on the Dickinson Clay Target Club for public information. I have a couple of girls that are here with me today that participate in the High School Clay Target League, Sierra Sitten and Jaylee Roller, my daughter, and they would like to just share a little bit about our program and how it has impacted them.
Hi, my name is Jaylee Roller, and I really enjoy this sport, not only because it's fun to shoot the little targets out of the air, but because the challenges, they don't really end, like there's always some sort of achievement that you can strive for and just always something to push yourself to receive. Like, it's pretty easy to get started. All you have to do is master your mechanics and you'll start putting up some good scores pretty quick, but after that, it's purely a mind game and you have to kind of have this little battle with yourself every time you step out onto the line. So it kind of forces you to get into a better mindset and kind of just help you every day in your life, just because you have to have a battle of your ego over here and, you know, you saying you can't do it, and you kind of have to find the perfect balance between the two. So I think that's what I really enjoy. It kind of forces me to create a balance and kind of better myself. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Sierra Sitten. I'm a homeschooler in Bellfield in my junior year. I've been part of the Dickinson Clay Target League for over two years now, and I never knew how much I could truly love a sport. One of the things I really love about TRAP is how independent this sport is, yet everyone is kind, a great team player, and we can all cheer each other on. Going into TRAP, I had very little experience with guns, along with many of my peers. It has taught us all the safe handling of guns and provided us all with the confidence to safely use them. TRAP has helped me build my confidence and character. The skill built through TRAP will follow us for a lifetime, and it has given us a newfound love for the Second Amendment and the preservation of it for many years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Melissa. My daughter is Sierra Sitten here. I'm here today to help enlighten and share with you the unique and valuable role the TRAP club plays in our community. Dickinson has desperately needed a place that brings every family, friend, high school, college, business, church, and Boys and Girls Club together. Bringing or being a member of our club offers something special to every cause in our community. My family experience with the club started through high school league with my daughter, Sierra. What we thought was just a normal high school sport turned into something more valuable than anything we ever could have imagined. It brought family unity. It gave our family common ground to relate on. This has happened with more families than I can count. Kids connecting with their parents in positive structure settings. My daughter has made lifelong friends of all diverse generations that would have never been possible elsewhere. Another fun fact is business owners and regular people get to know each other, and next thing you know, people are making career changes or employers are finding star employees. Another key benefit for Dickinson is that because of Blaine and his leadership and coaching, Dickinson youth is on the radar for many colleges across the country. Sierra, while, sorry, Sierra, while part of the high school TRAP, she has chosen to go much further. She also travels to local states and over North, all over North Dakota for all A T A competitions throughout the summer. Her goals by next summer of twenty twenty-six are to attend Michigan for the High School Nationals and the A T A World Championship at the end of July. As to our club, there will never, there will never be a time that my family won't be a member. Sierra has also made it very clear she wants her graduation and any potential future wedding and baby showers held at this club. This is how much this place has become a staple in her life. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
So our Dickinson Clay Target Club, we also call it D C T C for short, is a newly-formed nonprofit five oh one C three organization, and as Blaine said, we're located out by the Crooked Crane Trail at thirty-eight-twenty-one Fifteenth Avenue Southwest next. And we host private sporting events for families, friends, civic groups, companies, churches, all from June through October. We have a summer TRAP league where we bring adults and youth together, mentoring our next generation and creating an atmosphere that's inviting for everyone. Very soon, we will be breaking ground on a brand-new clubhouse that will have a year-round simulation room and training for hunter safety. We are open to the public on Tuesday and Thursday evenings as well as on Sunday afternoons. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them for you. That's a picture of our new building that we'll be putting up.
Mrs. Roller, I was actually going to ask you if you guys were going to do anything with that old building out there, and this is really great news.
Yeah. Yeah, that old building's pretty sad. It's served its purpose and beyond, but, yeah.
Yeah, I would just encourage anybody who hasn't been out there to get out there and do some shooting. It's really, really cool. It's a great opportunity. It's a, it's a, it's a great element of our community I think is often overlooked, so.
Yep. This year, we have sixty-five high school students, ages sixth grade through twelfth grade, participating in our spring league, up from like, was it forty-some last, last spring? And then we also have a fall league that comes up starting in August, or no, October, isn't it?
No, August.
August, okay. Can't, got to keep them all straight, so. Any other questions?
Mr. Vice President.
Commissioner Riddle.
For young Ms. Roller and young Ms. Sitten, what do you guys shoot?
Like, what kind of gun do we shoot? Or, well, we both have, we have the same singles gun, but we also shoot doubles. So our singles gun is a Browning BT ninety-nine with just the single barrel. It's a trap gun, so it has like all the stuff to adjust it and everything, unlike a normal field gun would have. It's pretty fancy.
Blaine sets them up pretty good.
Yeah, I have enjoyed following you guys through the summer on Facebook and stuff like that. I mean, Mr. Ducart, great program you got out there, and it's great to see all the success that you folks have had, so continue on. We'll be praying for you, and good luck.
Best of luck.
Also, if any of you are interested in sponsoring our building, we do have sponsorships available, so you can talk to either Blaine or myself.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I have a presentation from Sunrise Youth Bureau, annual, their annual presentation by Director Prowse. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Good evening. I'm Holly Prowse. I am the Director of Sunrise Youth Bureau.
My name Amber Hofstadt. I'm the Youth Advisor.
So we are here basically to go through our twenty twenty-four annual report. If you guys have any questions regarding that, just let us know. I know the majority of you guys probably know about our services already, so I wanted to present a little bit different this year. So first and foremost, we are here to thank you for your continued support. We use the City of Dickinson funding to help assist with our current programming. That includes diversion, crisis intervention, education, prevention, out-of-school suspension, shelter care, and attendant care. I wanted to explain a little bit about how we help assist other agencies in our community as well as the surrounding communities. We help our local law enforcement by being a safe place they can bring youth, youth to in the middle of the night. Amber and I are on-call twenty-four hours a day, so if law enforcement needs to place a youth, they're able to call our on-call cell phones, whether it is a youth getting a delinquent charge, a runaway youth, or youth needing time away from a conflict at home or a domestic situation. We help our local human service zones if they need placement for a youth, whether it's a CPS worker needing a safe place for a child if there's child abuse and neglect going on in the home, a foster youth having a conflict with their foster parents, or youth that keeps running away and needs a safety plan to be put in place and to, a safety plan to be put into place, they're able to be brought to Sunrise. We help our local Badlands Human Service Center. They're able to place a youth if they are received a crisis call where the youth is having a mental health crisis. They may just need a mental health break away from their home or school. They may be working with a family that is going through a tough time and need a place for their teen or child to go until a plan is put into place. We help our local schools by providing prevention programs. This may include education on drugs, alcohol, vaping, respect and rules, manners, bullying, et cetera. We also help our local schools by providing out-of-school suspension. We have seen a huge increase in our out-of-school suspension numbers from last year to this year. We help Southwest District Juvenile Court with our diversion program. They're able to refer first-time and minor offenses to our diversion program. Because of this, we are keeping teens out of the juvenile justice system while still holding them accountable for their actions. This also helps juvenile court with their caseload. We help parents who may be struggling with a defiant youth at home. We are able to work with a parent and a child by explaining the juvenile justice system and what can happen if they continue this behavior. We give them classes on what they may be struggling with. This can include anger management, conflict resolution, making good choices, self-esteem, et cetera. We can also make recommendations to other programming or agencies in our community. Without the support of the city, counties, and partnering agencies whom we have contracts with, we couldn't provide these services. We appreciate your continued support. Did you guys have any questions for us?
Commissioners, any questions?
So I'd say from last year's annual report to the current annual reports, all of our numbers are consistent, except for the exception of out-of-school suspension. I believe last year we maybe had seventeen, and this year, or excuse me, in twenty twenty-three, we had like seventeen students, and twenty twenty-four, we've had fifty-two students. So that program is, the schools are utilizing that program quite a bit, which is good, so the students don't go home and play video games, they can come to Sunrise. We can educate them on the reason they got into trouble, whether it's vaping or getting into a fight, being disrespectful, and then we also help them with their homework while they're there. Would you like to add anything, Amber?
I, Ms. Prowse, I know that you guys do. I just commend you and your staff. You do a fabulous job. I worked with one of those children, I've sent many your way, so just keep up the good work. I know it's tough work, but it's rewarding work, so keep doing what you do.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Mr. President, and I would just add that you guys are exceptionally nimble, and you're always looking at ways to grow your services and help additional kids, so I want to give you a lot of credit for that as well. You're always looking for new ways and maybe new ways to look at the same problems you've been dealing with, so you guys deserve a lot of credit for that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. We did bring some brochures, so we can pass those out as well.
Okay, we have a rezoning request for community orchard rezone by, presented by City County Planner Josephson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Steve Josephson, I am subbing for City Planner Birchak tonight. So the first, the request you have before you is a, it's a request to rezone this piece of property. Most of it is unzoned. A portion of it is zoned community commercial, and it would be, the requests from Parks and Recreation District to rezone it to public. They do have a representative here tonight in case you have any questions. This would be the first reading of this request. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Open it up for any discussions? This is, this is a first reading, is that correct?
Yes, it's the first reading, public hearing on this one?
Yep.
And there is a public hearing that's required for this.
Yep.
I would have some questions for, is it Mr. Ray, is the representative?
Yes.
How old are the trees that you guys are going to be planting here? How long do you think it'll be until you're at a point where this is actually an orchard?
That's a really good question. Thank you, Benjamin Ray, Executive Director, Dickinson Parks and Recreation. We're hoping within three years. We're looking at inch-and-three-quarter caliper trees that we're going to bring into this area, and we were looking to do this over a multi-year process, but we have had a local business owner who is excited about this project and has volunteered to donate all of the trees for the project, so we're going to be moving ahead with it mostly this year. And again, like I said, we hope within three years we would be able to see some of the fruits of this orchard.
That's really great. That's a great idea. Hopefully the first of many.
Yes, this is, this will be our first, our first location. We feel like this is a great place to start, but we do have plans to do additional locations in the future.
Great.
Any other questions, sir? Okay, this is a public, public hearing, so I will now open the floor up for anyone who would like to make a comment on this in the public. This is regarding the rezoning request. Last, last request, if someone would like to get up. If not, Commissioners, this is, I need a motion.
And just for the sake of orientation here, the proposed area is, it's right north of like Queen of Peace Catholic Church, right? Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Commissioners, any follow-up questions, discussion? If not.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Move on to vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. We then have a special permit use. Sorry, my computer jumped to, my computer has, hold your gaze today. Keeps wanting to go to the news. Okay, so. For five-star storage presented by City County Planners Josephson.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Baer Commissioners. This is a request to, to expand a, an existing special use permit for convenience storage. The existing one was approved, gosh, I believe it was about twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. It's, it's been, it's been out there for a while. They wish to expand, they wish to expand to the north. Just to let you know that you'll, you'll be hearing a, you'll be hearing a minor subdivision request tonight that, where they will be taking their existing subdivision that they're in and combining it with, with a piece of property to the north. The special use permit is contingent upon that, upon that being approved. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of the special use permit, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Josephson?
Mr. Josephson, is there any additional entries into that property, or is it still going to be the stuff that's on twenty-ninth there?
I believe it's, it's going to be the same access point.
Okay. So nothing coming off of Highway twenty-two there?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Josephson, just, just to have my bearing straight, this is across from Red Rock Ford, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, yep, right there.
Right.
Thank you.
Right on twenty-two there.
And in this case, in this case, this is, you just need one here, one. And in this case, in this case, this is, you just need one here, one reading for this.
Mr. Vice President, this should be a consideration to approve a resolution 11-2025 for this.
Give me one second. My computer run back again.
Always happens at the worst time.
All right, somebody should open this up for public hearing. Okay, anybody, anyone in the public who would like to get up and talk about this special use permit with five-star storage, please feel free to come up to the podium. Last, last call. Anyone in the public who would like to get up? Speak? If not, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a, Mr. Dawson, I'm sorry. The number for this is 2025.
11-2025.
Move to approve 11-2025.
Second.
All right, we got, we have a motion from Commissioner Otterman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Go ahead and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Thank you. We'll notify the applicants of the commission's action tonight.
Thank you. And that is the end of public hearing. When I'll go back to regular, regular agenda items. And we were at Community Development. We're going to talk about a bunch of dams. So we got the Queen City Dam EAP Project, DWR Cost Share Contract presented by Senior Engineer Keller. Welcome.
Commissioners, for your consideration is a cost share agreement with the North Dakota Department of Water Resources to complete an emergency action plan. An emergency action plan for the Queen City Dam is required per the North Dakota Department of Water Resources Dam Safety Standards. The agreement is to reimburse the city for eighty percent of the cost to complete the EAP up to almost a hundred thousand dollars. The city's share will be almost a hundred, almost twenty-five thousand dollars for a, a total cost of just under a hundred and twenty-five thousand. This revenue for this project is in the 25 Capital Improvement Plan and funded through GPT. The next step after this agreement is to finalize the contract with commission approval, of course, with BAR Engineering, who has been selected for this work through a competitive bidding process. The agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Keller? If not, a, a motion for, I ask for a motion?
I do have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Keller, do you guys perceive any impacts on, just because I'm probably going to be asked by friends that golf a lot, are there going to be any impacts on the golf course when they're rebuilding this dam?
This is, this is not the dam that's being rebuilt. The, the Queen City Dam or the Dickinson Dyke is.
Okay, okay. I was orientated wrong there. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Riddle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Go ahead and vote. Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now move on to the Queen City Dam Risk Assessment Project, DWR Cost Shares Contract. Again, presented by engineer, Senior Engineer Keller.
Commissioners, for your consideration is a cost share agreement with the DWR to complete a risk assessment for the same Queen City Dam. Risk assessment is required per North Dakota Department of Water Resources Dam Safety Standards. The agreement to reimburse the city is for sixty percent of the cost up to twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The city's share will be fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. This revenue for this project is included in the 25 CIP Plan and funded through GPT. Will be following the same steps as the previous agreement with BAR Engineering, as they've been selected through a competitive bidding process. The agreement terms have been reviewed by the city attorney, and we recommend approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Keller regarding the Queen City Dam?
I'd move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Otterman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Go ahead and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now move on to the Mans Dam Feasibility Study Project, DWR Cost Shares Contract, presented by Senior Engineer Keller.
Commissioners, for your consideration is a cost share agreement with the DWR to complete a feasibility study for addressing safety issues with Mans Dam. Mans Dam is the one that's located in your hole number seventeen.
Yeah.
A feasibility study was recommended by the DWR in pre-conference meetings with, with that group. The agreement is to reimburse the city for seventy-five percent of the cost to, to complete the feasibility study up to seventy-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. The city's share will be twenty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. The revenue for this project is included in the 25 CIP Plan and also funded through GPT. The next step for the completion of this agreement is to finalize the contract with BAR, pending your approval. And again, they've been selected through a competitive bidding process for this. This cost share agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney, and city staff recommends approval. To answer your question, Commissioner Otterman, we do anticipate some changes to the golf course. We have had an initial stakeholders meeting with the Bureau of Reclamation, who runs the Dickinson Dam, the land, landowner adjacent to, to Mans Dam, as well as the Parks and Rec Department.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Keller, just, just a question regarding this dam. Is this the one that a couple of years ago, this was even back before I got on the commission, they were talking about trying to do something with this dam and make it recreational so that kayaks could go down over this dam? Is that, and there was going to be fishing in rocks? Is that this dam?
That, that is the, Commissioner Bear, that's what will happen to this dam, most likely, depending on this feasibility study. But there's also the, the East Broadway Dam, which is right off Sixth Street Southeast. That, we'll show you, show you a picture in, in a few slides. Go here. This is, this would be the East Broadway Dam. But, but yes, we do recommend approval for the Mans Dam feasibility study.
Okay. I dumped the gun on that one.
Yeah.
Too many of them. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, if not, may I have a motion for approval?
Mr. Vice President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now we'll get to the East Broadway Dam Land Donation, presented by Senior Engineer, Senior Engineer Keller.
Thank you, Commissioners. For your consideration is a warranty deed granting donation of the land adjacent to the Heart River and west of Sixth Avenue Southeast, as described, within the warranty deed. This land will be affected by the construction of the Rock Griffler Structure that will be replacing the East Broadway Dam. We have a picture of the East Broadway Dam here. The, the land in question are these three particular parcels that are included in the warranty deed. The deed has been reviewed by the city attorney, and the city engineering staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Senior Engineer Keller regarding the East Broadway Dam and land donations? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Otterman. Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Now have a Final Platte Sixteenth Street Business Plaza, presented by City County Planner Josephson.
Thank you, Vice President Bear Commissioners. You have before you a minor subdivision plat for the Sixteenth Street Business Plaza Edition Minor Subdivision. The applicants are requesting to take portions of two existing subdivisions and some currently unplanted land and, and replant it. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. The, the applicants are here tonight in case you have any questions for them, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
City Commissioners, any, any questions for Mr. Josephson or the applicants? Hearing done. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Vice President, move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Thank you. And this is, this is a resolution. What's the resolution number on that one?
Mr. Josephson, for the Final Platte Sixteenth Street Business Plaza, that's Resolution 12-2025. The next one, the Final Platte Five-Star Storage, will be 13-2025.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, this is, I had referred to this earlier when we talked about the five-star special, special use permit. This is a final plat of the Badlands Storage Second Edition, and all they are proposing to do here is to match the area for the special use permit is to replant the existing, existing lot and the lot to the north to, in order to accommodate that expansion of the, proposed expansion of the special use permit. Both Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Josephson regarding the Final Platte Five-Star Storage, Five-Star Storage?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Otterman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now move into Final Platte Jerry Williams Subdivision, also presented by City County Planner Josephson. This is a resolution. The number on it is 14-25.
Thank, thank you, Vice President Bear Commissioners, Steve Josephson, City County Planner. This is a final plat. It's a major subdivision plat of the Jerry Williams Major Subdivision. This is out in the extraterritorial zone, extraterritorial zone. One of the things I did note is, from my perspective as county planner, is that these roads often is asked that the applicant do, do a, an agreement between the property owners in terms of road maintenance. In terms of road maintenance, city staff had reviewed it and also shared it with the, with the County Roads, Road Department, who, you know, who, who approved it too. Staff recommends, both the, I'm sorry, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval of the, of the final plat of the Jerry Williams Major Subdivision. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Joseph regarding this Final Platte with Jerry Williams Subdivision? If not, can I have a motion, and this is 14-2025, for resolution?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Otterman?
Second.
Second by, by Commissioner Frederick. We'll, we'll go ahead and, we'll vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Thank you very much. For those applicants who weren't in attendance today, we, we will, we will notify them of the city commission's actions tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson.
Now move into Master Service Agreement with Moore's Engineering, presented by Engineering Community Development Director Skleivichak.
Good evening, Mr. President, Vice, Mr. President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a Master Service Agreement, or MSA, with Moore Engineering Incorporated. The benefits of having a Master Service Agreement versus providing individual project contracts are consistent terms and conditions regarding, regardless of which project they're in fact working on, clarifying to the obligations or rights of both parties, and which reduces potential conflicts, and then ultimately reduced review time for staff and, and our city attorney on any future potential contracts. City Engineering and public work staff recommend approval. And I will make a note, the, if approved of this MSA, the, the work order or the task order that's next on the list would be signed under this individual MSA.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Skleivichak regarding the Master Service Agreement with Moore's Engineering?
Mr. Vice President, move to approve.
We got a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now go, we'll move on to the 21st Street West Engineering Task Order Award to Moore's Engineering. Again, presented by Engineering Community Development Director Skleivichak.
Good evening again, Mr. Vice President, Commissioners. For your consideration is a task order with Moore Engineering Incorporated to provide engineering services for the City of Dickinson Project Number 202506, which is 21st Street West from State Avenue to Third Avenue West, for an hourly not-to-exceed amount as specified in this task order, which is a hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and zero cents. This task order is in reference to a proposal received through a request for proposal process, where eight proposals were received for this individual project. Moore Engineering Incorporated scored the highest based on their proposal for this individual project. Project scope of work will include a mill and overlay of the existing asphalt pavement from State Avenue to Prairie Avenue, and then ultimately new street lighting from State Avenue to Third Avenue West. All project plans, specifications, technical requirements will meet the North Dakota Department of Transportation requirements. The intent of this is to ultimately get this project bid ready and then wait for federal aid to become available for the construction of the project. Scope, major scope of work items within this task order are topographic survey, preliminary design that meets North Dakota DOT requirements and specifications, categorical exclusion by design, and applicable environmental documents as required by the North Dakota Department of Transportation. There's a total of eighteen individual pedestrian ramps that we anticipate to review within the corridor. Approximately seven hundred and fifty feet of new sidewalk along the north side of 21st Street West, adjacent to the Dickinson Drainage Way. And then final design and meet bid readiness classification by the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Project was included in the 2025 Capital Project was included in the 2025 capital improvement project budget funded through gross production tax. The project plans and specifications are intended to remain with the DOT as a bid-ready until funding becomes available for the construction and construction engineering. That is anticipated to be approximately 80.93% by the Federal Highway Administration of the total construction and construction engineering costs. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions regarding the 21st Street West Engineering Task Order Award to Moore's Engineering for Mr. Skleivichak? If not, may I have a more, motion?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Commissioner Otterman?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. And I'll go ahead, go on and vote. Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Moving to the North Industries Street and Storm Project Bid Award presented by Engineering and Community Development Director Skleivichak.
Good evening again, Mr. Vice President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a bid award for project number 2023-16. That's the North Industries Street and Storm Project. The bid opening for this project took place at City Hall on Friday, April 4th, 2025, where two bids were received. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $1,429,653.75. Total bid was, or the total low bid was $973,341.76. This is a difference of approximately 32% as a reduction from the engineer's estimate. Key bid items that were less than the engineer's opinion of probable cost were contract bond, mobilization for asphalt paving, traffic control, temporary cover crop and mulch, topsoil, and then ultimately the gravas surfacing of four inches. Key attributes for the project, cement treated subgrade throughout the entire project area, four inches of City of Dickinson supplied crushed concrete and recycled asphalt blended aggregate base material over the surface of that cement treated subgrade, four inches of asphalt pavement over the Highway 22 frontage road from 43rd Street West to 45th Street West, and then storm sewer culvert improvements to include some limited borrow digit grading, and the intent of this is to reduce any severity and ultimately the frequency of some of the stormwater impacts to the adjacent properties. Construction is planned to be completed during the 2025 construction season, and the project was budgeted for the 2025 capital improvement project plan with the following funding sources, gross production tax, and there is that special improvement district assigned with this. City engineering staff recommend approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Skleivichak regarding this North Industries Street and Storm Bid Project Award? If not, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved to, motion made by Commissioner Frederick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now move on to the 2025, apologize, I have my computer, Road Maintenance Project Bid Award presented by Engineer, Community Engineer Development Director Skleivichak.
Good evening again, Mr. Vice President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a bid award for the 2025 Road Maintenance Project. That's project number 2025-01. The bid opening took place at City Hall on Thursday, April 10th, 2025, where two bids were received for the project. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $8,455,951.00. The total bid, which was the low bid, was $6,011,57.41, a difference of approximately minus 29% under the engineer's opinion of probable cost. Key attributes associated with this project would be a mill and overlay of the streets, patching and repairs of the streets within the project area. We are including a patching and repair of streets outside of the project area, so it would be available to any areas within city limits. We would, as Public Works deems necessary, do some patching where needed. Concrete sidewalk repairs and replacements, curb and gutter repair and replacements, storm sewer improvements along Eighth Street East from Shinagal Drive to Baker Avenue. Construction is planned to be completed during the 2025 construction season. The project was budgeted with the 2025 capital improvement project plan with gross production tax and then special improvement district. One thing I do want to make sure to the public and to the commissioners, when we looked at the storm sewer improvements within this area, there, there's, this is ultimately kind of step one for this specific set of improvements. We wanted to make sure any additional storm sewer got installed where the new pavement or where the mill and overlay is going to be associated. When we did the stormwater modeling within this area and some of the upstream area, we did note or anticipate that the storm sewer trunk main on the east side of 10th Avenue East is ultimately undersized as it travels to the south and then crossing 10th Avenue East to the open, the open channel on the west side of 10th Avenue East. That is something we plan to bring forward as a capital improvement project for 2026 with the budget reviews, and the anticipation is either we'd have to upsize that stormwater outfall as it goes to that open channel or add an additional stormwater pipe in parallel with the existing pipe. The intent here is ultimately to reduce the frequency intensity of the stormwater flooding that's ultimately occurred. It has impacted homes in that area. We're not necessarily assuring or guaranteeing that flooding will not occur in the future, but this should dramatically improve the frequency and intensity of both, both frequency and intensity of any stormwater impacts to that area. With that being said, engineering staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Skleivichak regarding the 2025 Road Maintenance Bid Project? I do have, Mr. Skleivichak, I do have one, not necessarily with this particular project, but with road maintenance. My question, and I understand it's early springtime and asphalt probably is not available yet to, where they're out doing paving, but last year we put a lot of money and effort into Dawn 15th Street, and I noticed with TJ Maxx and going over there by Harbor Freight, they've had to dig up that portion of 15th. So now, the, what has been all nice and redone by the city is all dug up again, and that's one thing I've had an issue with, where the city goes in and repaves the road, and then somebody goes in and has to dig it up again. Do you know what the plan is to refer, to turn that back to nice and smooth and the way it was before that project started?
Yeah, Commissioner Bear, the intent is, right now, the, any hot mix plants are not operational at the moment, and so we anticipate that'll be likely several weeks before, before that'll be available. So, once that patching work is completed, that should be, that should bring that back to normal consistency similar to what you had before the street cut occurred. I would say it's unfortunate timing that the city invested the money and then ultimately then the project came forth and improvements to that building which sat vacant for a significant amount of time. I guess there's pros and cons to both sides of that, though, you know, getting a, otherwise vacant property back into operations versus a street cut, it was just something we weren't aware of at the time of the project, so.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's one of those double edged sword. I'm glad, I'm glad they're here, but it's like, brand new road, nice and smooth, all messed up. And you're right, it is a timing, but I just wanted, I had, I had people ask, so I thought I would bring it forth to you. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions regarding the 2025 Road Maintenance Project Bid? If not, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now, we'll now move on to the 2025 Water Main Project Bid Award presented by Engineering Community Development Director Skleivichak.
Good evening again, Mr. Vice President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a bid award for project number 2025-03. That's the 2025 Water Main Replacement Project. The bid opening for this project took place at City Hall on Friday, March 28th, 2025, where three bids were received. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $4,779,478.00. Total bid amount for the apparent low bidder was $3,472,800.00, a difference, difference of approximately minus 27% under the engineer's estimate. Key difference in, the differences in the engineer's opinion of probable cost to what the bid was are noted general conditions, mobilization, traffic control, and then ultimately the lineal foot price for eight-inch PVC water main replacement. This bid award is contingent upon the final review from the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality due to the state revolving fund loan assigned to this project. Key attributes for the project include a mill and overlay of the streets after all trenching and excavation activities are concluded, replacing approximately 3,600 lineal feet of cast iron water main pipe. The photo in the bottom left corner of the image on the screen, that's actually a piece of pipe that was removed with last year's water main project. You can see how much sedimentation, mineral deposits, and then ultimately rust has gathered within the inside of that pipe. Included also within this project is approximately 28 lead service lines. These are the lead service lines that are tied to the existing cast iron water mains, and these will be replaced all the way from the water main to the water meter within the building. There was previously a special improvement district approved for this project for concrete removal and replacement of sidewalks and driveway approaches. And then ultimately, Department of Water Resources grant has been submitted, and since the date at which I, I wrote this memo, which was on Thursday of last week, we were actually awarded this grant. Total eligible amount of cost was 3.2 million. At a 60% grant eligibility, it's approximately $1.9 million, and I'll be bringing that cost share grant to the commission as soon as we have it from the Department of Water Resources. And construction is planned to be completed during the 2025 construction season. This was a budgeted project with the 2025 capital improvement project plan, and funding sources are GPT, state revolving fund loan, state revolving fund loan for the water main replacement, but also specifically for the lead service line replacements which has loan forgiveness, the special improvement district, and then ultimately Department of Water Resources grant for the water main replacement. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Skleivichak regarding the 2025 Water Main Project Bid Award?
Good job on the bid.
Thanks, Chair.
For, just for the sake of the public here, 27% under what we had budgeted, so that's awesome. I'm seeing that as continuing with through all these tonight. Is there any reason you're, we're seeing, we getting a little more competition, or?
Thankfully, we were able to get multiple bids on every single one of these projects with the slight reduction in some of the federal government spending. It's my understanding, based on feedback from some of the contractors, Minnesota Department of Transportation, North Dakota Department of Transportation, and the Montana Department of Transportation, all have had reduced budgets this year, therefore giving a little bit more, a little bit more options in the market, contractors looking at projects, and so, so ultimately contractors looking to fill schedules. A small attribute, I wouldn't claim much, I think most of it is ultimately market conditions and market driven, but I think a small attribute, collaboration with the engineering team, Public Works, et cetera, and the consultants working on every single one of these projects, I think we've done an extraordinarily good job of preparing these plans and specs, making sure we're taking out restrictions and, and things that ultimately create complexities with the projects that don't necessarily add a lot of value. And so, so that, you know, commend all the, on each of the individual project teams, and I think this is, it's going to be difficult estimating 2026 projects is all I can say. All of us are a little confused at the moment, so. In talking with the North Dakota Department of Transportation, they've ultimately seen similar bid results, maybe not quite as low as this. On average, we're just under 30% lower than our engineer's estimate, but there is some consistency occurring across the market in general.
You know, on these bigger projects, you're talking millions of dollars, it's pretty, pretty good deal for us, so.
Absolutely.
And the people of Dickinson, I guess, the taxpayers, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve, Mr. Vice President.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Otterman. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Move on to the Sims Second to Ninth Project Bid Award presented by Engineering Community Development Directors Skleivichak.
Good evening again, Mr. Vice President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a bid award for project number 2025-09. That's Sims from Second Street East to Ninth Street East. The bid opening took place at City Hall on Friday, March 28th, 2025, where two bids were received. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $5,992,593.50. Total low bid amount was $4,070,263.00, a difference of approximately minus 32% of the engineer's opinion of probable cost. Key differences in the engineer's opinion of probable cost to the bid were mobilization, bituminous removal, storm sewer pipe, eight-inch PVC water main replacement, and then aggregate base course material and the street lighting system. This bid is contingent upon final review of the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality due to the state revolving fund loan associated with the project. Key attributes within this project area, storm sewer extension of the existing infrastructure, replacing approximately 2,200 lineal feet of cast iron water main pipe with eight-inch PVC, replacing approximately two lead service lines from the water main to the meters of those individual buildings, lining of the existing sanitary sewer main, and then ultimately Department of Water Resources grant that was submitted, but since I wrote this memo, this was actually approved at the April 10th State Water Commission meeting. Total gross eligible cost for that Department of Water Resources grant was approximately 1.6 million. That's a 60% grant, and that's estimated to be about $960,000 in total grant amount. That's something I do have planned to bring forth, that cost share agreement to the city commission as soon as that's available through the state. And construction is planned to be completed during the 2025 construction season. The project was budgeted for the 2025 capital improvement project plan with the following funding sources, the gross production tax, state revolving fund loan for the storm sewer and sanitary sewer lining, state revolving fund loan for the lead service line replacements, and the Department of Water Resources grant for the water main replacement. City engineering staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Skleivichak regarding the Sims Second to Ninth? Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Skleiza Check regarding the Sims Second to Ninth Street Bid Award? Harry Nun, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Commissioner Odomin.
Excuse me, second.
Sorry.
Second.
Second.
I didn't have my mic on, sorry.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Odomin.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Now move on to the Dickinson High School Water Main Expansion Project Bid Award, again presented by Engineering, Community Development Director Skleiza Check.
Good evening again, Mr. Vice President and Commissioners. For your consideration is a bid award for project number 2025-11. That's the Dickinson High School Water Main Extension Project. The bid opening for this project took place at City Hall on Friday, March 28th, 2025, where four bids were received. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $795,656.00. The total bid, apparent low bid was $341,546.00. Difference of approximately minus 59%. Every single one of the bids was less than the engineer's opinion of probable cost. Key attributes with this project, this will loop the new water main system from Fairway Street, as shown in the map, all the way up to Empire Road. We'll be tying into the existing connection on, on Fairway. There's an existing four-inch connection into the water main. We'll be replacing that four-inch section of cast iron with eight-inch PVC and looping up around the high school, and then ultimately tying into an existing fire hydrant tie-in line into Empire, so getting any of that existing cast iron water mains out of the city right away. And then, on April 10th, so after I wrote this memo, at the Department of Water Resources, the grant award was ultimately made. That, State Water Commission, that's a 60% grant estimated at approximately 236,691, and that can cover construction and construction engineering costs. This is then associated with the development agreement that was recently approved by the City Commission with the Dickinson School District, so then as the costs for the project come in, we'll review and approve those costs. Anything above and beyond what the State Water Commission or the Department of Water Resources doesn't ultimately fund, then that'll be invoiced back to the Dickinson School District. So, kind of a win-win for the community as a whole. With that being said, City Engineering Staff recommends approval.
Commissioners, any questions here on the Dickinson High School Water Main Extension Project Bid Award for Mr. Skleiza Check? If not, may I have a motion?
Mr. Vice President, move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. Any further discussion? I, I do have just a general discussion or observation, Mr. Skleiza Check. One thing is, is looking at this list, there's a lot of stuff going on in Dickinson right now, so there's a lot of projects around this city about ready to get started, so that should make a lot of people feel pretty good.
Yeah, I think we're doing a lot to improve the community as a whole, and, and that'll be something I would anticipate at the, the next City Commission meeting, we'll make an official, formal introduction to our construction project manager, but he'll have a good handle on everything going on out in the field, and ultimately be our eyes and ears reporting back to engineering staff, so look forward to that.
If we keep going, we're going to start using double letters, you know that.
Public Works Director Prowse was also picking on me about that, so. Unfortunately, the next meeting agenda will be similar in length, so.
We love a challenge. Okay, Commissioners, do I have a motion?
We did that, yeah.
I'm sorry, we did have a motion.
Just for the discussion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I went for the discussion. We'll go ahead and vote.
It was me.
I'm sorry. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Riddle.
Aye.
Mr. Odomin.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved.
Would we be able to take five minutes here, quick?
Yeah.
For a restroom break?
Yes, why don't we take a five-minute restroom break? Okay, we're going to resume. We're going to go to pu- public comments, not on the agenda. Just a reminder to the public, we're going to hear to the, the, the recently passed policy, thank you, policy on public speaking in, in, in the City Commission. So I asked everyone that, that please will go, will go in order, and I have the order of the people here, as long as you signed up for it, and I do ask that you keep it within five minutes. So, I'm going to begin with Dave Valet, if Dave Valet would come up.
I changed my mind.
Changed your mind, sir?
No comment.
Okay, no comment?
Yes.
What's that?
Yes.
Mr. Steinbach?
I'm David Steinbach. I live on 1192 Eleventh Avenue East. I have three things I wanted to, one was what I mentioned at the last meeting about the sign-up. I stopped by here six minutes after, three minutes after noon to sign up, and, well, Rita wasn't here, the gal at the front desk wouldn't help me, and they called, she said, "Well, if you're here by 4:30, you can sign up at the door." Well, I didn't know if I was going to make it, so I called it a quarter after four, and all I got was voicemail. And apparently I made it in time because Rita met me at the door and I got to sign up. So, are you going to get a system set up so a person can come, or call, or, I mean, that's kind of ridiculous that only one person can sign, sign up for this meeting?
I think that's something we're going to, we'll, we'll work with it, something, I mean, the first time. We could adjust.
Number two, after the last meeting, I'm talking to some citizens out front, I don't remember their names or wherever, but the gentleman said that they'd done the special improvement district in his area, and I says, "Oh, what'd they do for your access to your driveway when they're working on the streets?" And he says, "You have none." Now, I'm in the special improvement district for this year. The ambulance has been at my house just about every year, well, they haven't been there yet this year, but it's still early in the year for the last four years for my wife. Are, are there, if, is there a wake? Can I get in and out of my driveway? If they're going to tear out the curb and gutters to take my wife, or, for ambulance access, for emergency personnel to come in, or, or what sort of plans do you have in effect? I seen what was going on on Sims Street last year, and those people had absolutely no access to their homes from Sims, and I'm hopefully not, this mill and overlay doesn't go like that, but what is the plan for that?
Mr. Steinbach, I have your cell phone number, I can give you a call after the meeting. How's that sound? But yes, access will be provided.
Oh, okay. The, the last one is the, the special assessments increases, we, I was at the Board of Adjustment meeting last week, and I was curious, what sort of credentials do these people that work in the assessment department have for coming through and giving these assessments? I know they, Joe had mentioned what his certificate he's got, but the gal that came over, it was like a farce because she comes into my house with this digital tape measure, and, "Oh, you've got vaulted ceilings," and she's taking the height, and, "Oh, those are more expensive." Well, excuse me, those vaulted ceilings been in there for the last 45 years. It's not like that should change the value of my house now. And, and, and she did a bunch of other things that goes around measures of rooms. Well, like I say, the house has been there for 45 years. Nothing has changed. I'm, I'm beginning to wonder what the qualifications are. I took her to the basement, and I don't know why the city ever allowed it, but I've only got a seven-foot basement, a block basement, because apparently they had a concrete shortage back then. And my son-in-law's 6'8", I've got a header across for support where I took out part of the bearing wall. I mean, he's got a duck, whether he goes across the room, you know? And the, after the city had a broken water main there in 2017, and the water ran into my house for eight months before they found the broken water main and fixed it. Now, in those, let's see, that was 2017, that's eight years now, I'm starting to get some bad cracks in my block walls because it affected my footings in my house. She never looked at anything that would be, take away from the value of my house. All she was walking around and doing was looking for things to increase the value of it. And it just seems to me that they're not qualified to do what, what it appeared they were coming through and trying to do. And I, I know after I left the last meeting, they, you voted to cap the increases to 15%, but that still seems a lot because I've gone through and, you know, they've increased over 60, 70% in the last, since 2021, which is way higher than it has been from all the years other that I can see, that I have lived here.
My, my, my recommendation is talk with Mr. Hersfield about, if you're concerned about his staff, I'm sure he'll tell you their, what their qualifications are. I would start by contacting him, okay?
Contact Mr. Hersfield and?
Yes, sir. If you have concerns about his staff and their qualifications, I would talk to them, talk to him about that. I'm sure he can, he could tell you.
So I have to make another appointment with?
That's where I would go. Yes, sir. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Physic? Jeff?
I'll reserve the right call up later if necessary. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Helgason?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Seth Helgason, and I'm here to say what no one else will say. The system is corrupt, and we're done being silent. This isn't about politics, it's not left versus right. It's truth versus lies, freedom versus tyranny, we the people versus the machine. Let's stop pretending the courts serve justice, they serve power. Let's stop pretending lawyers protect the people, they protect the system. We, we, we've all heard it, just get a good lawyer, but when the hammer drops to say, "I can't help you, I'm an officer of the court," that's not justice, that's betrayal. And don't think that's by accident, the legal system has been, has been deliberately engineered to confuse the people it's supposed to serve. They don't speak English anymore, they speak legalese, a private language meant to exclude you from your rights, because if you can't understand the rules, you can't fight back. And if you can't fight back, they win every time. But I've got news for you, we're done playing their game. The Constitution wasn't written for Harvard graduate or the elites. It was written for blacksmiths, for farmers, for everyday Americans, for us. And if we have to relearn it line by line, so be it, because our rights weren't given to us by the government, they were given to us by God. I got a couple bullet points I want to go over from the Constitution. "We the people do ordain and establish this Constitution," that's in the preamble. "The enumeration of certain rights shall not be construed to deny others retained by the people," that's the Ninth Amendment. "The powers not delegated are reserved to the states or to the repeat, or to the people," Tenth Amendment. "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech or the right to peacefully assemble the government." That's the First Amendment. "This Constitution shall be the supreme law of the land," Article Six, the supremacy clause. "A law repung it to the Constitution is null and void," Marbury versus Madison, 1803. And that case is so strong, nothing, and I mean nothing, has beaten it. Now let's talk about what's really going, what really going on in our city. John Odomin, you brought up Vanguard at the Equalizer Board meeting, so did John Hersfield. Now let's talk about it. You admitted they're involved in our city, you admit, you admitted they're influencing your decisions, so I'll ask again, who runs this city? The elected officials who took an oath to serve the people, or unelected billionaires pushing, the push, pushing global agendas? From where I'm standing, it looks like our sovereignty is being sold off piece by piece, while you smile and nod and call it progress or economic development. Well, we're not buying it anymore. We're not, we're not property, we're not your livestock, we're not your controlled oppositions. We are the people, we are awake, we are rising, and we are coming for every ounce of freedom that you and your handlers are trying to take from us. Let me be clear, municipalities can be sued, so can each one of you in your official capacity when you act outside the bounds of your authority and against the rights of the people. You swore an oath not to the Chamber of Commerce, not to the global investors, not to Vanguard, but to the Constitution of the United States and to every citizen. So mock us, ignore us, try to silence us, but you cannot stop what's coming, because the spirit of liberty is here, right now, in the hearts of the very people you were supposed to serve. So I'll leave you with this, get out of the way or stand with us, but hear me loud and clear, we are not backing down. And I have one more thing I would like to go over. If she is the city attorney, how can she go sign an oath of office for her county attorney? She's committing fraud, and you guys are just allowing it. This is not okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll now move on to Commissioner Comments. Commissioners, this is your time.
I came in late, am I allowed to speak?
No, so you're not.
It was designed to silence me, so you're going to silence me?
Sir, you needed to sign up prior to the meeting, that's what the policy required.
Ma'am, you created the memo to silence me, so.
Ma'am, what's that?
Proceed to.
Okay. We'll move on to Commissioner's Comments, not on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Comments.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Odomin. Mr. Odomin.
Mr. Really, go ahead. I, I just wanted to take a moment here. This is kind of bittersweet. This will be my last meeting on the City Commission. I, I got a job that will require me to, no longer serve on the City Commission, I'll still be in Dickinson, but I'm going to be the new State Director for Congresswoman Julie Fedorcheck, so I'll be traveling around the state a significant amount of time. Baby, baby Odomin number four is showing up on May 4th, sorry, May 6th, May 5th. I need to get that right, so I'm there. Cinco de Mayo, and I had considered May 6th possibly being my, my last meeting, but I'm going to have my hands full probably with a newborn baby on that day, so this will be my last meeting. I want to thank the city staff. It's been phenomenal to work with you guys the last several years. I think the city of Dickinson has one of, if not the best city staffs that I've ever been around. You guys are extremely talented, and, and you know what you're doing. We don't always get it right, but I think we have a pretty good batting percentage, and so keep up the good work. Thank you for welcoming, welcoming me with open arms, especially those of you have, who have been around here as long as I've been on the City Commission. And then to Commissioner Frederick and Mayor Decker, you welcomed a guy who, first time you met me, I was you met me, I was probably a snot-nosed kid running around the house with some of your high school classmates, little brother. So I appreciate you guys showing me the ropes as well. To the citizens of Dickinson, thank you for entrusting me with being a commissioner on your city commission. And to my wife and kids, thank you for letting me serve my community, and I guess I'm coming home. So my daughter, last night, I told her that I'd commission tonight, and she said, "I wish you would quit commission," and I said, "Okay, I will. Tomorrow night's my last meeting." And she kind of cheered. So she misses these Tuesday nights. Yeah, that's my news. Thank you, everyone.
Commissioner Otterman, I just want to thank you for the service on this commission and everything you've done for the city. So I know it's bittersweet, but good luck on your new adventure. Wish you the best, and with a new baby.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President. John, it's been a pleasure working with you over this last four-plus years, and I mean, we've got to work on some good times, things, and some hard things, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and I hope I get to still see you on the football field, which it sounds like I will, so.
Yeah, I'll yell at you on the football field instead of at a meeting.
Sounds good. But I wish you the best on your new adventure, and you're going to do a wonderful job for Ms. Fedorczek's group, so.
Anybody else with... I have two comments, but Commissioner Riddle, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. First and foremost, Mr. Otterman, thank you for your service. Of course, I haven't known you a whole lot, but I've enjoyed knowing you and look forward to conversing in the future as well. So thank you for your service, and good luck with what you're doing. Look forward to seeing how you move ahead with that, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep. Mr. President, if I continue on there, I do have two things, I guess. Next meeting, I probably won't be here, hopefully be in the field. I will try to call in, we'll see how things go. In the second that I have, I think the last meeting, I had requested breakdown on the city employee, twenty-three thousand dollar for the recall election. I have not seen that as of yet.
Commissioner Riddle, we can certainly email that to you. That is done. I'm sorry we did not bring that this evening, but we will certainly email that to you this evening.
That would be great. Okay, just wanted to touch bases, so thank you.
Mr. Dawson or Mrs. Wanko? In light of John's news here of moving on, can you tell the commission what that then, what happens from here?
Absolutely, Vice President. First of all, again, to Commissioner Otterman, thank you again. I want to reiterate the comments by the other commissioners. It's been a true pleasure working with you, and I think I can say on behalf of city staff, we will truly miss working with you and your guidance and your expertise on this board. With that, the sentry code does provide us guidance on what we are to do in this situation. It does say that if a vacancy occurs in the office of a city commissioner, the board may call a special election to fill such vacancy for the unexpired term or may, after fifteen days from the date of such vacancy, appoint a person to fill such vacancy until the next city election, at which the election, the unexpired term shall be filled. So with that, if we consider Mr. Otterman's last day being today, fifteen days from today would put us at May one, excuse me, in which the commission could call for an appointment. Just so we're clear, the sentry code does say that that person would only fill that term as it's unexpired. So I believe Commissioner Otterman, you would have been up for reelection in 2026, 28, so that person would fill until 2028. The sentry code also provides for a petition upon five percent of qualified electors to call for a special election. I think historically speaking, and this doesn't happen very often, but I think the last time this did happen, somebody was appointed to fill the spot, if my memory serves me correctly, and it might have been...
I believe it was when Mayor Johnson stepped down and Commissioner Jackson became mayor, and then they appointed, I believe, Michael LaFour. I think that was probably the last situation. I know there was one prior, when Mr. Frenzel was put on the board for something for...
That sounds right, based on my recollection. Like I said, this doesn't happen very often, but that's the process that we will follow. And so I'm going to leave it in Mr. Dawson, your capable hands to take care of that and get us the information we need to move forward with that.
Mr. Dawson, any follow-up on that one?
First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Otterman for the service of the community. I've enjoyed working with you. It definitely takes a lot away from family time, and I understand that, and we certainly wish you best luck in your endeavors, and you've always looked out for city staff and supported city staff, so I want to thank you for that, regards to that. And just kind of follow up, Trinity Wankles, we'll take a look at the North Dakota Sentry Code of forty oh-nine dash ten and make sure we follow that moving forward, and we'll put some information out to the public on this tomorrow as far as the announcement moving forward.
And I just have two more things before we end this very long meeting. I want to, first of all, congratulate Senior Engineer Keller's daughter, Victoria. She was one of the three winners of the North Dakota League of Cities, the Jan John Jordan Scholarship Award. I had the pleasure of reading her essays, they were very impressive. So congratulations to Victoria on winning that scholarship. Also want to put a special thanks out there to Baker Boy for their generous donation of the donuts for the coffee, coffee and donuts with the commissioners last week. They're very supportive of the city and very behind what we do, and I really appreciate their management and staff and their employees supporting the city, so I want to thank them. So with that said, last thing I got to do today is ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.